Awesome. Good evening and welcome to the Hanson Select Board meeting of Tuesday, January 9th, 2024. Happy New Year to all. This is our first meeting of 2024. This meeting is being recorded by Whitman Hanson Community Access Television. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. As per usual, we have a jam-packed and very exciting agenda. But before we do that, last week, we learned of the passing of Stephanie McSweeney, who was a select board member. She was a 48-year resident of Hanson and she passed away just after Christmas. She is survived by her husband of 47 years, Tom McSweeney, who she married in 1976, and their three children, Jesse, who was also a selectman, and their daughters Molly Porter and Emily Howe. Stephanie was a teacher at Quincy City Hospital Nursing School, and she was the director of nursing at Embassy House in Brockton, and also director of nursing at Bay Path Nursing and Rehabilitation Center in Duxbury. But in addition to being a wonderful mother, wife, and nurse, and teacher, and director, she was also a very dedicated public servant. And she gave to the town on the McQuann School Improvement Council, School Committee, Board of Selectmen, Zoning Bylaw Committee, Hanson Housing Authority Council of Elder Affairs, and election worker. During her time as an elected official, she always made it a point to make sure everyone had a voice. She listened to everyone and ensured that their concerns were addressed, be it street safety, to making sure mail was being delivered throughout the town. Her passion for political involvement and giving back was instilled upon her son Jesse, who also went on to service the Hanson Board of Selectmen after she did not seek reelection. So I hope you will join me in a moment of silence in acknowledgement of Mrs. McSweeney's passing. And with that, Mrs. Rain, I will turn it over to you for public announcements and upcoming meetings.
We have a lot tonight. All right. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees: Board of Health, Bylaw Committee, Cable and Internet Committee, Community Preservation Committee, the Capital Improvement Committee, Cultural Council, Energy Committee, Historical Commission, Memorial Day and Patriotic Observance Committee, Recreation Committee, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website, www.hansonma.gov, or by calling the Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. Nomination papers for the May 18th, 2024 town election are now available at the Town Clerk's Office for the following offices: two-year select board for three-year terms, Board of Health for a three-year term, Cemetery Commissioner for a three-year term, Hanson Housing Authority for a five-year term, Assessor for a three-year term, Board of Health for a one-year term, Planning Board for a five-year term, and two constables for three-year terms. Oh, and more. Two trustees of public library for three-year terms, two water commissioner for three-year terms, and the Whitman Hanson Regional School Committee District Committee, School District Committee, pre-K through 12 for a three-year term. Each candidate prior to obtaining the blank nomination papers shall sign a statement containing his/her name and address and the town officer which he/she intends to be a candidate. The last day to obtain nomination papers is Monday, March 25th, 2024, and nomination papers must be returned to the Town Clerk's Office by 5:00 p.m. Friday, March 29th, 2024. A minimum of 50 certified signatures of registered voters is necessary in order for a candidate's name to be placed on the ballot. Upcoming meetings: Select Board, January 23rd, 2024; Select Board, February 6th, 2024; and Select Board, February 20th, 2024.
All right. Thank you very much, Mrs. Rain. So we have a wage and personnel schedule for 7:45, so we've got a lot of ground to cover. All right. Camp Kewaunee Large Agreement. Ms. Green, I think last we spoke, which was prior to the new year, a draft had been presented to Town Council. Town Council had presumably reviewed, approved, made changes, et cetera, et cetera. And is the rental agreement we have in our packet the proposed final draft?
Yes.
Okay, great. Is there anything? Oh, excuse me, Mrs. Rain.
We're having a little...
What was happening?
No, no, go ahead. Well, no, you're David's a friend.
No, no, go ahead.
Are you up?
No, go.
Okay. He's not up for... He's a constable. Said two constables?
Okay.
Actually, no, you are up.
You are up? Okay, never mind. I apologize.
All right, that's okay.
I didn't know what the protocol was to...
Well, if there were a mistake, and if it just, you know, for informational sake, best bet is to go to the source, which is our town clerk, and she can just double-check the records on when people were appointed and their term expiration.
Okay, sorry.
No problem.
Carry on.
Okay. So I was gonna say, Mr. George is, you know, saying something about me trying to drive this through to fruition in a timely manner? Okay. Did anybody want to point out any material changes on this? Any, I don't know, Mr. Milice, Ms. Green, anything critical that we should know about that was changed that we haven't discussed before?
I don't believe there's any differences from what we looked at. We went through this.
Yeah, we did already.
The original draft that I submitted, I think on the second, was the draft from the Recreational Council.
Okay.
They had...
I thought so. I figured it would be redlined if that wasn't the case.
And once approved, you can just send that board. That'd be great. So it's not going to be any use.
All right. So I will, if nobody has any further questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the new and improved Camp Kewaunee Large Rental Agreement as presented to us this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? Lovely. Okay. That brings us to treasure collector contract discussion. Ms. Green.
Okay. So during an executive session a few weeks back, there was negotiations regarding the employment contract of our new treasure collector, Lisa Clark. There was some concern regarding the accrual of vacation time, and I had had a discussion with our treasure collector, and I think we came up with a good compromise rather than front-loading all the vacation time upfront, which has been tradition for the town. I understand, you know, the board is looking to maybe mitigate any risks for an employee having front-loaded that much vacation time, taking all the vacation time, and then leaving the town.
Right.
So I think we came up with a good solution, a compromise, and I'd like to present it to the board. So what we had talked about was, so the vacation time that treasurer collector would be, would have would be 25 days total. So what we thought was a good compromise on this would be to break the vacation accrual into two separate times. So basically, on July 1, 2024, she would receive 12.5 days, and then on January 1 of the new year, 2025, she would receive 12.5 days. So this way, she's not being front-loaded the full amount. She's getting 12.5, which is half of the vacation time. And there is a clause in the contract that she would be allowed to carry over up to 10 days. So I thought that was a good compromise. I thought that maybe this addressed the concerns of the board and mitigated the risk of somebody using their full vacation time when they're leaving. This way, it's 12.5 days for six months, and then 12.5 days for six months. But it's still, if she wanted to take 10 days in a row or two weeks, that still allows her to do that, if she were to go that route.
Okay. I mean, I feel like that's pretty responsive to what we were trying to do, which, as you said, was to mitigate the town's risk that somebody would take off, although we have every faith and confidence that Ms. Clark is going to be here for the long term. We just need to make sure. Did anybody have any questions or concerns?
I do.
Oh, Mr. Hill, please.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no.
Sorry, Madam Chair. The contract goes through 2026, correct?
Yes.
But when you mentioned the vacation, you only mentioned 2024. Is it also in 2025 and also in 2026?
Yeah, I'm sorry. That needs to be updated.
There's a couple places where it mentions the date of 2024.
Okay.
I see it on a couple places throughout.
Okay. I'm sorry. That will be updated to reflect, actually, it's a three-year contract, so it would be to June 30th of 2026. So it's a three-year contract. So I will update those, the June of 2024.
Yeah, it's on page, a few different places.
Okay.
Middle of, top of page four.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. So I will entertain a motion...
I just got one more question.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Just for the sake of just asking out loud, so let's just say, for example, in the, you know, in the first six months, they have 12 and a half days, right? So, you know, what happens if they want to take a third vacations because something happens or whatever? Is there, is it worth having a discussion? I know I'm throwing the wrench in the gears in the last minute unless it's already here or somewhere, where they can borrow against the other half? Because then they would be able to take three vacations, or three weeks of vacation, whatever, with prior approval from you, making sure that it's not front-loaded, it still has the protection of being front-loaded, but it still allows people the flexibility of their full time. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Is it in here?
That is not in here, but I can update the contract to have that option in here if the board, if the board pleases to do this. We can certainly put in there that with the approval of the select board, you know, I would take my, the town administrator, but with the approval of the select board, an additional five days can be borrowed against future allotment.
Because I'm just thinking the second half of the year would pay back that original time. Because you know what's gonna happen? Six months is a long time. You might, February vacation, I'm thinking about my kids, February vacation, March vacation, you know, April vacation, I'm sorry. It all falls in that six-month period. Plus, if you want to throw in another one for summertime, you have options, but they also...
We can certainly...
It totally does, but didn't we already pass a bylaw that allows us to do that at our last town meeting?
For positions that fall under the bylaw. So this is a contract position.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so we want to have it, we'd want to have it specified in her contract.
So we want similar wording?
Well, did she negotiate that? I mean, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Weeks, but this is a negotiation. I don't have a problem with it fundamentally, and I guess, you know, it's fine. We can offer it up. What do you guys think? Fine with it? Okay, all right. So is there any other modification anybody is, you know, thinking? Okay, all right. So with the modification of the, of what Mr. Weeks just articulated and what Mr. Hill just articulated, which was changing the dates to 2026 and then allowing to borrow against future vacation, I will entertain a motion to approve the treasurer collector, Lisa Clark's employment agreement for a period effective January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, great. All in favor?
All right.
All right.
And I will present this contract at the next meeting with all, with the corrections and the addition of that language for all the select board to sign.
Okay, great. Animal control offers a discussion. Ms. Green.
Okay. I think we're a little early for our... Joe is expected to come to the meeting.
Oh, okay, then let's, we've got plenty of other things that we can skip around and discuss. So let's go to recreation discussion. What say you, Mr. Weeks?
So apologies for having the flu last time I was supposed to talk about this. So thanks for being, putting me on the agenda here. We had a little bit of a mix-up. It didn't dawn on me that Lynn was out today, so I emailed her the stuff so you guys could look at it earlier today. Obviously, she's not here.
Do you want to postpone for the next one? It's fine.
I don't, we could, but I am prepared to talk about it. I just don't know if...
Do you think we can follow along if you just...
I mean, you might.
All right, let's give it a try, and if not, we can always put it onto the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, because I feel, I feel like at the very least, if we decide to postpone it, I can make some of the edits now that you might have.
Okay.
Because I just have some pressing questions. So some of the things that I wanted to, the way I outlined it is in a couple of different sections. The first is, is what the membership of the recreation committee would look like and what their role would be. And then I put together a mission statement, and then how, basically, a task list that answers how the committee would try to fulfill its mission, and there's a series of bullet points, then a vision statement, and then what does the recreation committee do? And I think a lot of this stuff is gonna have to do, yeah.
I'm wondering if you can forward that to Emily. She can Dixie upstairs and print it out, and you can do a little tap routine while doing so and talk us through some of it, and then she'll come down with the package, and we can all follow along.
Okay, so why don't we just skip to...
Skip it for now.
Yeah, one of the other things, and I'll just do that while we're talking.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry that that didn't occur to me before.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Okay, so that brings us to Inspectional Services Task Force discussion. Ms. Green.
Okay. And our fire chief and deputy chief will be joining us. So Chief O'Brien, Deputy Chief Barrons, myself, Building Inspector Carrie Glass, and Health Agent Gilamato have been meeting regularly on Monday mornings to discuss code violations in the town, whether it be mainly focusing on commercial, industry of code violations. We found these discussions to be very helpful, beneficial. It's the departments working together. It's the departments addressing complaints that are received, and then just following up and making sure that all our businesses are following all the codes. It's been very helpful with going out to these businesses as the inspectional task force. It's a very, it's a good, powerful force because it brings all the departments together to talk about solutions, to talk with the business owners, and basically to make sure that businesses are complying with all of our codes. So we would like the board to officially vote to accept this new Inspectional Services Task Force so that we could, we can come up with a mission, come up with some goals, provide the board with some reports of our progress, you know, businesses we've looked at, code violations that we've successfully cured, you know, helped the business owner cure. And I think it's a very good task force. It allows us all to work together. Gil, did you want to put in any opinion towards it?
Well, it's been part of it, and I think it's gonna work very well together. We do have a lot of control violations in the town. We've been out there and, you know, we've corrected some places, and there's black more to do. And like, we're just getting organized with this, and, you know, it'll be a while getting all together. We invite different people that, you know, become partners of all kinds of things, and we all go out there. If there's a situation, we'll all go out there at the same time and address it. And so far, I think it's working out pretty good. I know on my end of it, you know, the residents, the personal, and stuff like that, there's certain things that, you know, on public view, I think that, you know, that's why we have this discussion on certain things.
Right, right.
But I think it's gonna work out very well, because there's, you know, there is, you know, I think it's gonna be a good idea, and it'll work out best for the town. Maybe stop some of these things before they start, instead of something being, you know, 80% done, just try to get it on some 10% done, some...
I really, I think the board has expressed a number of times in executive session how impressed we've been with the amount of progress that you've been able to make on issues that have been longstanding in town and where your predecessors were unable to make any progress. And I think because a lot of the matters that you're addressing have been discussed in executive session, we can't get into any detail. But I will say, it's been very clear that when you guys work together and you're sharing that information, it's so much more powerful in terms of enforcement and in terms of getting the message and in terms of resources, and also in terms of each of the enforcement, you know, disciplines, feeling support and not feeling as though they're on their own, trying to do a donkey-hody move and, you know, fighting the windmills on their own. And it's been, to me, quite delightful to see that progress and that collaboration. And, you know, I just, kudos to all involved, you know, some of whom aren't here, but Chief O'Brien and Charlie Barrons and Carrie Glass, and of course, Mr. Amaro and yourself. It's the best of town hall working together, and I would love to see more of that happening on other things. So I will now stand off of my soapbox, but I will say, I just want to be clear, we're not creating a committee. This is what you guys are doing in a day-to-day, it's part of your day-to-day job, so I don't have a problem with calling it a task force because that's what it is. But I, you know, it's not terms to expire or committee appointments or anything of that sort. It's an operational task force of people doing their job, but what we're doing is saying, we support you guys working together and getting these things done together. So I will entertain a motion to create an Inspectional Services Task Force to include, but not limited to, because occasionally we might need to throw Mr. Skellinger in there, or we might need to throw somebody, you know, ZBA, and, you know...
Or Chief Mix.
You know, Chief Mix, or we might have to throw Tony DeFrayis in there. But as core membership would be Board of Health, the health inspector, designees from the fire department, building inspectional services, and the select. I'm entertaining that motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's not gonna change the scope of people's job descriptions or anything like that, right?
Nope, not at all.
Perfect. Okay, good. Thank you.
All in favor? Okay, great. And that is perfect timing. Perfect timing, Ms. Spring.
Yep. Just one. Yeah, just one.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. If you don't get a coffee.
It's memorized.
Thank you.
All right. So walk us through, Mr. Weeks.
All right, so this is essentially just an outline in its design to try to give, I think, again, the purpose of this is we try to create a system in which the recreation committee would have the ability to create their own mission and vision and create something in hopes that we would have people, you know, volunteering for that and trying to make it happen. And I think, you know, Alex has done a great job of being that sole representative up until this point, but I'm thinking at this point, we have to try to spin it in a different way and maybe give some guidance, or at least start the process of giving some guidance so that people, it might speak to people, and then they would therefore want to be part of that mission and vision. So really, this is the beginning of an idea around mission and vision around what the recreation committee might be, but in doing this, again, this is just the beginning, it's just to start the process. I don't know if we want to specifically name things like High Street Park Oversight in this, although I'm not against it, I think it might be a good idea. I just want to give a layout at first. So at the beginning, the membership details, the way it's outlined here is, the Hanson Recreation Committee consists of five appointed members who meet regularly to review policy, programs, procedures, and recommends fee structures to the select board when applicable. The committee welcomes community input. It would just be something simple like that. The mission statement would be to increase people's enjoyment of living in Hanson and build a deeper sense of community as we provide recreational and educational opportunities to all Hanson residents, regardless of age, ability, and means. The Hanson Recreation Commission fulfills its mission by organizing, directing, and promoting a planned year-round program of varied leisure time activities within the limit of available resources, assuring that all discretionary leisure time programs and activities are conducted in a safe and supervised environment, providing leisure time activities that are socially acceptable and economically affordable, ensuring that activities are available to all citizens of Hanson regardless of age, race, sex, religion, physical or mental abilities, or social or economic status, cooperating in both programming and planning with all other community agencies and departments that have a similar mission in the community, continual research and evaluation of the recreational needs of the community. Vision statement's pretty simple: We will champion community and personal growth through lifelong recreation experiences. And what does the Hanson Recreation Committee do? Hanson Recreation Committee provides our community with lifelong wellness, cultural, natural, educational program, and recreational opportunities that promotes healthy lifestyles, bring an economic impact to the community, and facilitate social interaction. That's it in a nutshell. I guess my question is, aside from this very kind of like vague and inclusive statements, do we want to specifically name different types of departments, different types of organizations, and actually give it very specific black and white oversight over certain, you know, jurisdictions? I'm thinking High Street. A lot of this stuff is brought from the, in a very biased way. A lot of this is coming from things that we've talked about in High Street Park Committee stuff. So all of these taglines, all of these different things that we're doing are very much a part of what we're trying to create there. So I guess this is the starting point to figure out what we want to do.
So like, in your Plymouth, well, the High Street Committee, right, we're calling, the High Street Committee, your, really, your mission was sort of the blueprint of that physical, physical, you know, location. But in doing so, a lot of programming questions have been coming up, and a lot of like, well, what are you guys, you know, you're gonna have beer gardens, you're gonna have this, you're gonna have that. So I don't have a problem with giving them responsibility for programming at High Street. Where it gets weird is like, would they be responsible for programming at Camp Kewaunee? Or working with the Camp Kewaunee?
Working, working is the main...
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I mean, so when I envision a recreation commission, I would say that they want to run, I'll just throw a swim program, I know we already have one, right?
Yeah.
The recreation committee would come up and be like, we want to have a swim day at the beach with, you know, a bunch of the kindergartners, whatever it is, and they can come up and say, you know, we're running this kindergarten program, and they would come to the commission and say, this is what we're doing. We would approve it, and then they would run it. It's, you know, that's one of the joys of being a town department, is we will work together with you for literally no cost, you know, from what it has with the camp, at least, you know.
So, now, a couple of things. We changed the name of the Recreation Commission to the Camp Kewaunee Commission.
Correct.
At town meeting.
Correct.
So if we're going to create this long-term committee, originally, we had established it as like, what do we want to be when we grow up for our recreation committee? It was really just gonna be kind of like a recommending body, but this is now, and it's totally fine, taking a left turn. So we now have to reconsider, this would need to be a warrant article for us to create this new committee. I'm not saying we can't do it, like, we can't start already, but just would have to, like, at least after the fact, clarify the fact that we've created it. I think that this is exactly what I've always heard people saying, that we need to have a committee that does in town. We've just never actually put pen to paper for it. So what do you guys think?
I'm a little confused between the difference between a committee and a commission, frankly.
We could, I mean...
We're calling this committee.
Commission's, I don't know, has more gravitas, I guess, but it's probably subjective.
I don't know. I don't know the difference. And even when I was typing it, sometimes I would write commission, sometimes I would write committee.
And I see it when we did it here, too.
Yeah, because I do it synonymously. I think there is technically difference, I don't know what it is, and I don't really know what it is.
We probably should call it a commission, maybe. I think we should probably call it...
It's the Camp Kewaunee Commission.
Yes, Mr. Stewart, as the sole existing member, we would love to hear from you.
So I did just look up the, do a quick Google search of the difference between committee and commission. So like, a committee operates as like an internal regulation, while a commission is more external?
So it would be a commission, really, because you're working more with constituents.
Right.
So we can easily make that change.
One thing, just to suggest, you know, when you're gonna be making this article, you'd want to make a budget line item for it also.
Yes.
Because you will need money in that account to run those programs. That's the one thing that we learned repass to Camp Kewaunee, is you need money for recreation. It doesn't come free, you know, so...
And I think in addition to working with you, I would think that we would want to work with the Cultural Council, you know, with the library, with the senior center, like, you know, kind of get, not so that you're programming for those groups, but just so that there's some kind of coordination of activities. And particularly with the Cultural Council, they do have money to have programs. And right now, I think, the last time I looked at their report, and it's been, it's been like a while, maybe like a year or so since I looked at it, but I think we actually gave money, and I love this place, so I'm not, I'm not talking smack at all, the Soul Homestead down in Middleborough, we had given money to them for a program, which is quite lovely, but we're in Hanson, and I would love to see us having some of that money go into programming. And it's probably likely that nobody from Hanson has applied for any of the grant money from the Cultural Council. grant money from the cultural council. So, just so everybody knows, Mass Cultural Council parses out money to each of the states, I mean, each of the towns. So, each of the towns gets a chunk of money, and then we have our cultural council that decides how that money gets allocated within the objectives of what the cultural council, which, you know, like singing, dancing, what you would think of as cultural events. So, I think that that would be something that you'd want to partner and kind of develop a relationship of looking at you, because you're the only member of the department right now, so, of commission. Yes, the commission. All right, Mr. George, thoughts? Are you okay with this?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Mr. Hill, anything?
Nope.
Okay. So, then, I think that we, I will entertain a motion to create, to put on the warrant, both a budget and an article, to create the Hanson Recreation Commission as outlined here, which would be five appointed members, with the objectives and mission as created by Mr. Weeks. Oh.
I'm sorry.
Yes, no, please.
I forgot to mention that in the current budget, the Camp Kawani budget is listed as recreation, if I'm not mistaken.
So, we'll have to work with Eric to.
One, that rechanges the enterprise fund to Camp Kawani Commission.
Yep.
Then one more that would re.
We'll tick and tie. Yeah, we'll tick and tie.
Yeah.
Yep.
Sorry about that, I should have mentioned.
Yeah, I think that's probably just a case of, that's what we always called it on the spreadsheets and everything.
Yeah, I don't know if you need to tell me in the article to change the name on the budget.
No, no, that's just an internal accounting thing. But technically, there really isn't a recreation commission anymore. There will be, but there, there isn't right now, because we renamed it.
They do, they have a lot of money in their account, so.
Yeah, so.
Do you, um, do we want to put in there, I just want to ask this just to get you back.
Oh, sure.
Um, do we want to put in there that they would have some oversight in the High Street Park stuff, or because we need that, we need an overseer for, for grant purposes, from my understanding? Do we want to put that in there specifically?
Where would you see, like, in the mission statement, or?
I genuinely don't know. It's kind of one of the reasons why I left it semi-vague, to, to see if you thought it was even necessary. I don't.
Well, you're saying for grant purposes that we do need to have that.
From, from what?
Yeah.
From, from the meetings, it, it was brought a couple of times that we need a rec, commission in general. It, we need a body to oversee the maintenance of the High Street Park as it develops.
Okay.
For grant purposes. And we, I think we, we've collectively talked about this, the select board means that it would make sense that the recreation committee would do that, because it can serve that purpose. I just don't know if it's worth explicitly stating it in there, or if we can just kind of, it would, it's just through tradition, it'll just become that. That's my only question, really.
Well, we, I mean, do you want to just come back to us and propose where we want to dovetail that, and we can just vote on it at the next meeting?
No, yeah, whatever's easier, I just want to get your input before I do.
Or does somebody have a strong thought about this?
Is that someone we need legal input from, or?
I'm sorry, what?
Do we need legal input on, on how that would be, you know, in order to get the grants? Do we need to do it a certain way?
Honestly, I think the way it was explained is, we could just say, the rec commishy, commission will just do.
Okay, will oversee.
Yeah, I think so.
Programming at High Street.
Yeah, I've, I've just not a huge fan of like over, over politicizing things and just creating policies for the sake of it, so I just don't want to over-commit things.
If the recreation commission is going to be in charge of, see, we also have.
Programming at the High Street.
Programming, yeah, programming. You know, and we have the parks and fields people in, in High Street Park, and that's what I mean, yeah.
So, our, our mission's probably going to be done the minute it, it comes to fruition, because the whole purpose of it was, it began as, what are we going to do with the Plymouth County Hospital?
Right.
It evolved into, what are we going to do with the site? Then it evolved into, how are we going to build the site? And then eventually, it's going to dissipate, and those people won't be on there anymore, because their mission will be done.
Yep.
Somebody has to pick up the baton.
Yes, exactly.
It, it should be the, the rec commission is the way I'm trying to guide it. Yeah.
Okay. So, does everybody agree that that's where, I, I, I mean, yeah, I think that's, that makes sense.
I don't want to belabor the point, I just want to make sure I get it.
No, I don't think you're belaboring it, I think it's an important point. Ms. Green.
Um, Madam Chair and Mr. Vice-Chair, just wondering, you mentioned that there's a stipulation for grants, that we have like a, a committee or commission that has oversight over the park, like, as far as recreational activities. I'm wondering if it makes sense also to put some type of language in there that references or even touches on maintenance.
Okay, yep.
As well. So, I know we're, we're looking at, you know, a playground, if, if a swing breaks or something, they could, who can they contact to go and fix the swing? Or who can they contact to upright the porta potty when, you know, we, our little rascals out there decide to push it over, or?
We may want to talk about the porta parties after we've recruited five members to this committee.
Just throwing that out there. That's not a good selling point, Ms. Green. Not a good selling point. We don't want to lead with that. But, yeah, just to, you know, put some type of language in there that would satisfy grants to show that recreation commission or committee, or whoever we vote, will have some type of oversight of, of the High Street Park recreation activities and maintenance and upkeep, to say that.
So, you're volunteering?
Hmm?
Top data?
So, I think it would have to be in the mission statement, right?
That's where I would put it, yes.
Yep, yes. So, we'll insert language in there. I think we can still, you know, take action on this, as long as we agree that we're going to insert that language in the mission statement. So, I will entertain a motion to create the Recreation Commission, to put an article in the upcoming town meeting warrant, and to put a budget in there for the Hanson Recreation Commission, in accordance with what Mr. Weeks presented, with the additional tweak that we are going to clarify that High Street Park activities will be overseen by this committee. So, I'm entertaining that motion.
So.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? All right, fantastic. All in favor? All right.
Appreciate it.
That is lovely. And, just in time, Mr. Kenny. So, welcome. Happy New Year to you, we are thrilled to have you here. Okay. Animal Control Officer Discussion, Ms. Green.
Okay. So, over, over the past years, for many, many years, Hanson has been basically sharing animal control with many other communities, surrounding communities, which up until recently has worked well for the towns. Animal control is a, I want to call it a complex area, because you never know when a deer is going to get hit on the road, and, you know, you're going to have a dead deer on the road, or a skunk, or if you're going to have a dog bite, or a dog attack, or a bear, or somebody's, somebody's livestock that's been killed. So, it's a, it's a 24-hour seven, 24/7 job, because they're on call. Animal control officers generally do not, they, they, they don't patrol streets around us, because basically, we don't have the resources to do that. So, since, Joe, you've been on with the town how many years now, since 2020?
2019, I think.
2019. It's been a part-time, 16-hour-a-week position that the town has paid. The town has not provided any type of equipment, vehicle, supplies. So, basically, we've just been paying animal control for going out there and picking up the dead animals. We have not provided any type of resources as far as, where do you put these dead animals? How does he transport them? What does he wear when he transports these dead animals, or bloodied animals, or animals that have been abandoned, or things like that? Recently, the town of Hanson is growing tremendously, and there are laws, Mass General laws, that do state that each town is to have an animal control officer. To give you some, some numbers, the town, prior to Dakota Partners, which was the first multi-unit family, basically apart from eight, like a three-family apartment complex, there are animal control laws that pinpoint those type of housing units. And prior to this, this opening of this unit, this, this housing complex, abandoned animals really weren't a focus of the town. If people abandon an animal, it's running around the street, animal control goes out, they go to the, they pick up the abandoned animal, and fortunately, we've been able to come into agreements with other towns to utilize their animal shelters. We've been using Lakeville for the last few years. But with the arrival of these multi-unit facilities, we're, we're facing new challenges. For instance, when a unit is evicted, they leave their pets behind in this vacant unit. And it has, it is under the law, the town's responsibility to remove that animal. It's not up to the, the management company, it's not up to the person that was just evicted, it's the town's responsibility. So, so, our animal control officer, Mr. Kenny, has to go and remove the animal. If it's a cat, that doubles the challenge, because most animal shelters in the area do not accept cats. What do you do with the cat? Mr. Kenny brings the cat to his home, until he can find some way to do, to bring this cat. We can't have our animal control officer bringing animals to his house. If he were to get bit or hurt by one of these animals, that's on the town, because it was an animal that he, he didn't have anywhere to bring this animal.
Not to mention, he's not getting paid for taking care of the animal at his home.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. If he were to drive a dog to, to Lakeville, which is 40 minutes travel time, he gets to Lakeville to find out, they don't have room, because they were also contracting with other towns to utilize the shelter for animals. So, guess where that animal goes? It goes to his house. The town of Hanson has an animal shelter. It's been closed since 2012, but I think the time has come, as the town grows, and I'm going to give you some numbers, to seriously look at reopening that shelter. It's been closed, but it just needs a little bit of lipstick, as our chair would say, and, and some repairs, but we can utilize it as an animal shelter. Now, to give you some ideas, some, some numbers. The town of Hanson is growing. We have unit, four units going in on Main Street. We have Liberty Woods, 56 units. Station Landing, 49 units. Dakota Partners, which is, has been open a little over a year, 48 units. Cushing Trails, 40 units. Country, County Road, nine houses. Two hundred and six units that are being built currently in the town. With these multi, multi-units, we're going to run into the same problem. People get evicted, or they move, they leave the animals behind, and it's up to the town to go and, and, and pick them up and deal with them. So, the town of Hanson has been fortunate all these years to have a 16-hour-a-week animal control officer, who's been on call 24/7. I don't think the town can, can continue with that route, I think it puts us at risk. And I think we need to seriously look at increasing the budget for animal control, supplying him with a vehicle, which actually Hanson did, does have a vehicle for animal control, that has a special equipment on it to lift heavy deer. Joe, what is a deer weigh?
Usually between like 150 and 160.
So, if you look at our animal control officer, he's in the shape he's in, because he's had to lift these things by himself, and put it in the back of his truck, and then cart it off, till he recarts it off. We can't, we can't ignore it anymore.
Yeah.
So, in our, our FY '25 budget, I've increased the salary for animal control, I've, I have allotted four funds to reopen the animal shelter. We're working with, hope maybe, social vocational to come out and help us fix it up. We're working on having the back cleared. Again, the, 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 the body is there, we just need to, to fix it up a little bit. And provide him with supplies. We've never supplied him with any supplies, gloves, you know, ability to wear protective clothing, the, what are they, the nets that you need to catch it? We've never provided him with any of this.
Yeah.
Anything, anything. And I think we, we can't, we cannot continue that, and, and for Joe, he is an excellent animal control officer, he knows the laws, he works very well with the people, he's, he loves the animals, he's very good with the animals, and I think we need to pay attention to this, increase the budgets, reopen the shelter, and possibly partner with Abington. Joe is from Abington, and, Abington also does not have a shelter, so I, I've reached out to the, the Abington Town Manager, maybe to start some discussions with partnering with Abington, to help us maybe with some of the cost of this. And I'm just asking the board to maybe allow us to go further and, and further explore this. Again, I have put it in the budget, it does show an increase in the animal control budget, because we've put in for buildings. I have reached out to the social managers to ask what they do with animal control. Most of the other towns either contract out, they work with the Boston Field Services, they, they partner with other towns, which we're, we've been doing. And as we've kind of found out, sharing doesn't always work for the town.
It has not worked out historically for us. We've done Whitman, East, East Bridgewater, you know, now Lakeville, and, and there's always some issue. And I, I will say, since Mr. Kenny's been our animal control officer, I have heard very few, if any, I can't really think of any off the top of my head, complaints about responsiveness, or any of the, the rubbish that we used to hear before, because we just had people that just weren't picking up their phones, it was just like, I'm not answering the call. Maybe it will go away, some magical thinking. So, and I, I've been very impressed with Mr. Kenny on the number of occasions, and although I wish we didn't have to have these with you, the dog nuisance issues, you've been right on top of things, very responsive, very professional, in, in situations that are very volatile, people feel very passionately about their pets, and the potential that they might have to be euthanized, or something else might happen with them, and you've always been the soul of discretion and professionalism. And I, I agree that, I think, you know, it is a disservice to Mr. Kenny and to the town, that we're not giving him the resources he needs to do his job. I also believe that if we look at, we compare his salary to what others are making to do this job, he's not being paid appropriately. And, and yet, here he is, still doing the job, not really complaining about it, and doing it well. So, I, I've got a couple of questions. Do we know what the cost is going to be to rehabilitate that building? Just to ballpark, obviously, I know you don't know exactly what.
Well, what, what, well, I, I, so we know that the roof needs some work, needs some patching, because there's holes in the roof, so we know that. Charlie Baker is working on getting some quotes. We know that there is some brush clearing that has to happen in the back of the building, it's about $350 for that. As far as the fencing and the gates that enclose each of the different units, separate units, we can't have any rust, but we are looking into possibly having social vo-tech come and maybe take them, power, sand them out, and maybe repaint them, and then reattach them for us. So, we are working, I, I have put a budget of $15,000 in for rehabilitation of the building, and then electricity and water. The building already has electricity, it already has water, we just need to get it turned on.
Do we think ARPA money could be used for this?
I can look into that. What's good about the animal, the animal shelters is, they do tend to, to, there's a lot of interest in volunteers for animal shelters, and so, we get, we're getting, we're reaching out to different resources for helping us get that animal shelter back up and running. But like I said, I've put a, a budget of $15,000 in to, to fix it up, and get it moving.
Now, can we, can we clarify what we mean by shelter? Is it our intention to become like the Situate Animal Shelter, where we're adopting out, and people have to come and walk the dogs? Or are we a temporary holding shelter?
It's a temporary holding shelter.
Okay.
Not, not a shelter where we're going to be adopting or, or anything. It's a temporary hel, shelter, so that if Joe comes up, you know, he has to collect a cat, or a dog from an abandoned house, or anything like that, he has somewhere to put the, the animal, until he can make the other arrangements that need to happen.
So, there'll be heat, water, shelter, and most importantly, it will not be at Mr. Kenny's house.
Exactly.
Because, okay.
And we will work to, to create a logging system, and, you know, systems where, again, if, if people allow their, their dog escapes, and he's picked up on the street, he's brought to the shelter, kept overnight, they'll pay the fee, and then be released. It's not something that needs monitoring 24/7, so we don't need to worry about hiring somebody to be there. Joe, we just need to check in a couple times a day. Joe would just need to check in a couple of times a day. And again, I've talked to our veterans agent who has contacts with a lot of different groups that focus on, you know, animals and things, and he's said he would reach out to see if we have some volunteers. And again, some volunteers to come in and help us with that.
Now, would we have security cameras there just, you know, to kind of monitor, make sure that nobody tries to break in and nobody tries to break out? You know, I don't know, is that something that we had thought about? And then that way, Mr. Kenny could kind of monitor. If I, I know a lot of the doggy daycares that have like overnight situations, they have the cameras. And I think we could probably install them for fairly short money.
We could certainly look into that. If Mr. Kenny doesn't have any reservations about it, we can certainly look into that. It's located in the transfer station and there, you know, there's the gates that close up at night when they're not open.
And I did have a preliminary conversation with Mr. Perkins, and he led me to believe that he really didn't have a problem. He didn't think the Board of Health would have a problem. And Mr. Amato, you don't foresee a problem with Mr. Kenny having access to that building or any of that? Yep, okay. And I, Mr. Perkins had expressed a concern that somehow this was going to impact his budget. I said, this would be an entirely separate budget. This would not be added to the Board of Health budget.
No, no, animal control's always had its own budget.
Yep.
So it's just impacting that particular budget.
Now, in addition to looking at whether Abington might want to partner with us, which obviously would be wonderful because it could help to offset some of the, you know, the charges and fees that we're spending, is it possible to look into whether we could act as an overflow shelter for Lakeville? Because it seems to me, and speaking to Chief Mix, he said that quite often his belief is that Mr. Kenny and others who are using Lakeville are shut out because they're full up. And they, and as a result, he believes there may be a vacuum, a void that could be filled in an overflow. And again, that would be another revenue opportunity. So I don't know if we would enter into an agreement with Lakeville for the overview or enter into an agreement with all the same towns Lakeville does. I'm even, to be honest with you, I'm not against even poaching some of the towns from Lakeville. If they're so full up that they can't do the job well, and we're going to have overhead costs anyway, you know, obviously, we don't want to now turn this job into like a full-time and a half job for Mr. Kenny, you know, going. So within whatever he's able to do. What is the backup plan if Mr. Kenny is struck ill or run over by a Mack truck or, God forbid, decides he wants to take a vacation?
Hurts his back picking up those deer.
Yeah, or hurts his back picking up one of the deers, doing his daily deer lifts that he does.
Well, so what Mr. Kenny has done in the past is he has had other animal control officers fill in for him. And then he has paid that animal control officer out of his pocket, you know, basically. So when we pay him, he just turns that check over to the animal control officer. But, well, you know, we may need to look at a different format for that. But he's always had backups when he's gone away or.
Okay, but that's because he has unpaid vacation right now.
Correct.
As a full-time or even, you know, 32-hour employee, he would presumably have vacation, if that's what you're proposing, in which case he would not need to take any money out of his own pocket to pay for somebody to cover him on vacation. And I would assume the town would also be covering that vacation time.
Well, the only thing we would have, we would have to find out if another animal control officer can just fill in while he's away, and I don't know.
In general, in almost every town, it's underfunded. It's just a forgotten about group. So in most towns, like I work pretty closely with most of the surrounding towns, Rockland, East Bridgewater, I do stuff with Pembroke, Kingston, everyone knows everyone. So we'll typically ask if somebody can kind of fill in for days.
Yep.
And that's just kind of the norm of how it works because most towns don't have funding set aside to have more than one. Towns like Lakeville that has a fully functional animal shelter that you have a second animal control, like we actually have, might have three now, if. But that entitles people to get like a weekend or something like that. It's not, versus like if I go away for a weekend, it's finding someone. And typical, it's Laura from Whitman that's covering for me because she's close and she's usually available.
Laura, how, she's a selectman, right?
She's a selectman, yeah. So she's usually one that have cover for me as well.
Okay. Did anybody else have any questions? So we're looking at roughly, say, $15,000. We're going to look into whether ARPA can cover because we do have some ARPA money.
Which I will talk about in my county minister report.
And what are we looking for in terms of an increase to the budget for salary and benefits, roughly?
So, I should have brought that, the salary for the animal control that we budget for the year is $20,266. So what we've done, we've increased that to $41,000 for the increased hours. The, like I said, the shelter, we've added in $15,000 for maintenance repairs. I've added in electricity, gas, so, I'm sorry, I can't, for some reason, I can't get into any of my, any of my.
That's okay, that gives us an idea.
I would say, so it's brought, it's brought the animal control up for this year from, to $72,000.
Okay, and if we were able to partner with another town? Like what are we paying Lakeville every year?
Well, they're now assessing because their shelter was inspected and they needed to make substantial repairs. So they're now, they're assessing us $250 a year for.
We only pay $250? Or they're assessing an additional $250?
Well, we haven't paid them, we don't pay them to store the dogs there, is that correct? I mean, I, we don't, we don't get bills.
If we bring a dog there, they pay, charge the town daily if the dog is there. Typically, in Hanson, most dogs are clean. Most dogs are owned by somebody. There's a few that are, few in five between that or not. So most of them, at this point, because we don't have a shelter and a lot of times it's coordinating, getting somebody to come out at a, in the middle of the night or whenever to meet, to do that, the 40-minute ride. So by the time I'm out there, I'm getting a call for the dog, so.
Yeah.
Ninety-five, some of the dogs just go to my house. They stay at my house until I get a call and then I meet somebody to return the dog because we don't have a place to put them. And if you bring them out to Lakeville, it's a matter of making sure that there's space there and that there's someone there to meet you.
It sounds like a hassle. It's 40 minutes, you don't.
So that means every dog that gets picked up, in general, to pick up a dog and get it to the shelter is about a three-hour round trip or deal. And that's middle of the night, 4:00 AM in the morning, whenever. And then we get other animals like chickens, ducks, pigs, we got goats running around. All that stuff, none of that can go to Lakeville.
It is Hanson, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, it's a farming community. I love it, I have all kinds of weird animals, why am I able to bring them home? But in the case of something, say, I left, right? And the next person that comes in lives in a normal house that doesn't have facilities to hold this stuff, they can't bring a goat back to their house.
No, you're right.
They can't bring a cow.
No, that's not.
A trailer to put a cow in.
Okay, is that a real situation?
That's a real situation, yes. Like we have a cow out on, you know, by the East Bridgewater line, like in the middle of the road. What are we going to do with it, right? Most animal control is on, they last saw my cow. Been doing that stuff since I was walking, so for me, I don't care. But most people can't do that, right?
And I think that's an important point, Mr. Kenny, is although we're lucky to have you and you're going way above and beyond, and that's very clear, and if we haven't expressed our gratitude, I am expressing it now. But you're absolutely right. This is not a sustainable model. We can't build everything around, how much more can we get Joe Kenny to do? You know, that's just not a sustainable model.
In general, so the state laws require, they'll actually be a redo, they'll send out the town. A form saying that they're requiring animal control is legally have to have one. You also legally have to have a area to hold the animals. And right now, we don't have a contract with anyone.
Okay.
So we don't, by Massachusetts laws, we don't have the law standard.
We're technically not compliant.
Yeah.
La, 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 okay. So.
When you talked about cameras, there's no Wi-Fi up there, I want you to know that up at the transfer station.
There's no Wi-Fi up there?
No.
You people need to get with the program, Mr. Hill.
Well, we had cable and we decided that we didn't want people in watching TV, so we turned it on.
I do understand that, but.
You can do just an internet connection. It does not have to have.
You can, and also I would submit to you that you may want to contemplate cameras for your own purposes up there.
This is true.
Just planting that seed, Mr. Amato, okay? Yes.
That's very important, Mr. Kenny, to redo the dog pound up there again, as far as corn, how many is actually going to hold and whatnot. So once you get it all cleaned out, you'll redo that, how it pans out, establish how many animals it can hold and stuff.
Yes.
Start partnering with another town.
Yes, that's an excellent point. We don't want to bite off more than we can chew.
Will the, I'm thinking of the Boy Scouts, will the can, what will he do with that?
It's in a different section.
It is, okay, so I saw, totally.
Yeah, you know where that pound is, where Ms. Pennetti had that swap shop?
Okay.
So, yeah.
The swap shop's on the side with the cans. The other section is the dog pound.
Okay. I just, I remember when the dog pound worked, I remember that.
Yeah. Mr. Mossy.
Do we charge a fee for when we get somebody's dog?
Mr. Kenny?
So typically, that would go onto like returning your dog. So it would get charged when the shelter returns it. Right now, we don't have anybody to bring them, I don't even have a hindrance.
So when you wake up in the morning and go get, we'll say, my dog, right? You return it to me, I don't have to pay a fee on that?
No.
Not now.
Next time I go on vacation, I'm going to let my dog be happy.
And actually, to your point, there are some habitual offenders. I only know just from.
You can get like an off-dog, like an off-leash loss.
Yep.
It will, it costs $43 up to the VCA.
Yeah, to bail. Yeah, so typically, in most towns, if you have a kennel, you set about, you have an impound fee and then you have a daily fee. Most of them are pretty low, like most in general, impound fees are like range from $25 to $50 for the impound. That means any dog that comes in gets charged $25 to $50. And then if it's there for one day, two days, you have additional daily fees, which are.
So there is potential revenue, but obviously, you don't want to make it so prohibitive that people like keep it. I don't want that dog back.
You want enough so they'll not let their dog get out.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, so there's some other things, like there's required, so even if I pick up a dog that's a stray dog, nobody calls on it, right? There's a seven-day, in the state, it's a seven-day hold period. Legally have to hold the dog for seven days, just like you would property, like police station or something like that. Has to be held for seven days. The difference is, this is like live property. That means it's being cared for, for setting fees, right? Before it can even be considered for adoption. And then it has to be vaccinated, it has to be vetted before it goes out. So there's a lot of fees that go into this.
And do we work with, like, say, Hanson VCA on them scanning for chips and stuff like that?
Yeah, I personally own chip scanners.
Of course you do.
And I scan them.
Okay.
I also work closely with my personal vet who does the vaccinations if the dog has to go unvaccinated or vaccinated.
Okay, all right. This is absolutely fascinating. I mean, it's, you're such a testament, Mr. Kenny. You know, we're really lucky to have you. Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Kenny?
He does great animal shows too.
Huh?
He does great animal shows.
I've heard that, but I haven't had the benefit of seeing anybody, I have heard that. Any other questions?
No, I'm really all for getting that pound back up and running again so that we can take care of the town dogs properly.
So, Ms. Green, do you need a vote from us? Do you need some type of a?
I just, I, so I got, I sent Ms. Emily upstairs to grab my budget. So to answer the question, to be a little bit more specific, our animal control budget basically has been running, so for the salary, $20,566. That's for the year. With animal control, like expenses, we've put aside $2,500 for expenses, $800 for supplies, and basically $1,800 for vehicles. None of, none of those expenses have, has ever been used. So Mr. Kenny has never come to the town and said, hey, you know what? I got deer blood in the back of my truck, so I, you know, I want to get it cleaned out. He's never come to us, we're asking for anything. So that part of the budget has always stayed. So with the new budget that we've put for FY '25, we've increased the salary to $41,200. We've, we actually lowered the other expenses to $1,500, but supplies, we've increased to $2,500 because we'll need, you know, he needs those supplies that we've never provided them with. For the building, it has been zero since 2012. I put in $15,000 for the building, $5,000 for like utilities, gas, electric, and then $5,000 for any other unknown expenses, like if we have to, if we pay social vo-tech to redo the gates or things like that. So basically, our budget for that, for animal control was, let's see, about $28,966. Has been, our budget now for this, in $2,500, I've increased the vehicle from $1,800 to $2,500. Our budget now is $72,700 on that.
Okay, with an opportunity for potential revenue, but to Mr. Amato's point, we should size, we don't want to bite off more than we can chew.
Oh, exactly, exactly.
So we need to size it and just make sure, you know, what is our capacity? What could we take on? And then make some overtures to Abington and some of the other towns.
Yeah, and of course, this can be adjusted, you know, up or down. This was just based on what some of the towns had said that their expenses were and then just looking at the, getting the shelter back up to, you know, a point that we could house animals there.
Mr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One question I have is about the vehicle. Right now, we keep talking about that he's using his own vehicle and.
There is a vehicle that Highway has been using that was earmarked for animal control. So there is an existing vehicle, we're going to redeploy it to Mr. Kenny.
That truck will be moved to where it belongs, okay.
Right, we'll have the Hanson Animal Control lettering put back on the vehicle. And it does have a special, except a lift on it that helps lift heavy animal, dead animals up off the ground or like skunks and things like that.
But so that's part of, I guess it doesn't have to be part of this one because it doesn't really have anything.
Yeah, we already have it, yeah.
So we're making a full-time position because don't, are you animal control for other towns?
I do Abington, and I also do Fire, Hot Nights and Whitman.
Are you able to do full-time?
Yes, I've been doing it for nine years.
Okay, just not.
Five and yes.
Okay, yep.
And ideally, we brought it up before, it's like joining multiple towns. We brought up with, do an advocate in Abington, Hanson, joining them and kind of, in an ideal situation, if you had two people that were even 30-something hours, right? You'd have like a night person, a day person, at least there's a couple of hours a day that you're not.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm asking is, we're making him a full-time Hanson employee, are we looking at doing it jointly?
If, I mean, we're making him a full-time employee.
Right.
We're in parallel looking to.
Okay, all right, so that's.
So in other words, the agreement for Abington to join, we don't have that yet.
Right, okay.
We're hoping that that comes to fruition.
Do they have a pound?
No.
No, they don't have it, and Whitman.
Whitman is the only one around here that.
Whitman has a pound?
Yeah.
So, we're hoping, we're hoping. And if not Abington, then like I said, I'm not opposed to poaching other towns. Mr. George?
Just a quick question or a comment. I get it that the dog pound is a town expense, but most of your dog offices, I know Rockland, Waymouth, a lot of your other towns around, they fall under the police department. How come we just don't, why can't we just put a line item in for the police department? Give them whatever they need to run the dog offices? Because I'm sure anybody that calls that has a lost dog, they're not calling the town hall, they're calling the PD.
So they.
Do you get most of your calls from the PD? That's what I'm saying. Most of your towns around, I know, I don't know about Abington and Whitman and Halifax, but I know a lot of the other towns, I know Norwell, all of these other towns, Hangum, they all fall under the PD. And if we could do like a line item, a budget, give it, put it. And if we could do like a line item, a budget, give it, put it, let the PD run it.
I don't have a problem with that. I just don't want to make that decision without talking to Chief Mix about it.
Right.
And, you know.
I, I can understand the calls going there, but do, do they need the extra responsibility of running an animal control department?
He would run it.
He would run it.
Of course.
They would be responsible if it's under them.
Right.
Under the police.
I mean, you, you're working with them all the time anyway. Like the, the deer calls, they usually, because there's a car accident. So the police are there, and then Joe gets called out to.
There are, they're already involved in it anyhow.
Yeah, I, I just don't want to commit without talking to Chief Mix.
Right.
Um, so, but I, I, in concert, in, in theory, I've got no problem with that. Um, pending Chief Mix thinking it's, yeah.
You know, outfit is truck with lights, you know.
If it works for other towns, then it's worth us exploring, I think, yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
We can certainly explore that as well. I don't know why, um, again, um, I, I don't know why animal control has always been separate. You know, maybe, I, I, I'm not sure. It was well before my time.
Because it's Hanson.
Well, it's.
Because it's Hanson. It's not Norwell, it's not Waymouth, it's not Rockland.
That probably is true, but I think it's got quasi board of health things, it's got quasi police things, there's like some overlap of the, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of different things, like the, the board, work with the board of health, you have boarding cases.
Yeah.
You have cases with animals outdoors, and you have police cases, so it gets into kind of a mix, which is why animal control is usually kind of brushed off, because it's kind of like they don't know where to put it, because there's a little bit of everything. Um, so having it separate, it's not part of the board of health, it's not part of the thing is, how a lot of towns that do, do it, bigger scale do it. Um, some of them, like you said, like Waymouth, usually your cities, um, have it as part of, like you Waymouth, Quincy.
That makes sense, yeah.
They hold it under police, um.
Oh, yeah.
But even like.
Nor, Norwell's under the police.
Norwell's under the police, the Hams under the police.
Braintree.
Braintree.
Oh.
Um, and then there's towns like, like Lakeville has its own separate department. Um, and they're, they're all separate. Abington is on the board of selectmen, Whitman's under the board of selectmen. Um, there's like, uh, Rockland has its own full department. Um, they're all separated.
So there's arguments falling against, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, because it's just different.
It sounds like wealthy towns slash cities.
Yeah.
Have got it under, you know, police, and then others don't. But, but let's just talk to Chief Mix and get what his thoughts are. You know, if he, if he has an extremely violent reaction, then we'll know that that's probably not the path we want to go down. Uh, Mr. Amato?
Uh, my thing was, I think he's independent in every way, because it is a state-regulated position.
Okay.
And no one really has control like the board of health, even though we have the animal inspector.
Yeah.
It's state-regulated, she has a bond, you know, bond, or she has to report to the state. And so she does report to us directly, she reports to the state, and then invites us, or she does, and I believe it's the same position here.
Yeah.
Independent of everything, and you just report to it, you know.
Are you really like, the board of selectmen or?
Joe contacts me with any, basically, um, constantly letting me know, I, I had to, you know, pick up a cat, I had to do this, I mean, I wanted to let you know about this. So he, he is in regular contact with me. Um, and, and one thing I do say, the, I mean, this is going to be looked at with scrutiny. Um, I know, you know, the finance committee and, and other folks will look at this with scrutiny. Um, this is, this is not a want, we wanted, this is basically a requirement, um, that due to the fact that we're growing, we now have apartments where we didn't have them before. So this is going to be a requirement, and, um, I will talk to town meeting about it, but I know it will be met with, um, hesitation, um, from other committees.
Well, I think you just need to build the case and work the, the numbers, and see what we can do to offset our costs, um, to make it as financially, you know, and fiscally, um, appealing as possible, and, and that's all we can do.
And then the voters decide from there. Yep.
Um, all right, uh, did you need a vote from us on anything?
Um.
I mean, we're operating the warrant, so, you know, presumably we could say that we're going to tuck something in there for that, but I mean, you know, I don't know that you need a vote tonight on that.
Uh, maybe just to vote to support an article, uh, for, for the town meeting warrant to, uh, address the animal control.
I will entertain that motion.
So.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? All right, great. Thanks, Mr. Kenny. We appreciate it, and thank you for all that you do all the time. I have a whole new appreciation for everything you're doing.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, all right, uh, that brings us to, uh, fortuitously enough, open the annual town meeting warrant. Ms. Green?
Okay. Yeah, so it's, uh, time to start preparing for our May annual, uh, and special town meeting. Um, we have a memorandum ready that will go to all the departments tomorrow, um, once the board votes to open the town meet warrant, the annual town meeting warrant this evening. Um, it will give all departments up to February ninth to submit their articles for the warrant. Um, the memo actually gives them some guidelines of, um, how the articles would, will be, um, established, how they will be drafted, what information they'll include. Um, and we are, will compile everything, and then we're going to send it out. Again, there's specifications on here that all departments are to review the articles, um, for accuracy as far as, um, what the article is going to be asked for, the money, the project. Um, and then we will, um, compile everything and basically be right on track for town meeting, um, with this art, this memorandum going out tomorrow.
Okay, um, so I will entertain a motion to open the May twenty-twenty-four annual town meeting.
So moved.
And seconded.
Okay, um, any further discussion? Uh, were you just moving your arm? You weren't raising your hand?
No, my eyes are just.
Okay, all right, um, uh, all in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, any body movement is taken as you potentially raising an issue, okay.
No, sorry.
Uh, Madam Chair, sorry.
Yes.
Um, the capital improvement, um, is meeting on the twenty-sixth of, uh, February, department meeting.
Yep.
So is it acceptable for us to put in a placeholder article and give you the numbers after the fact?
And, yes, yep.
Need to be.
Yes, and in fact, we're expecting, Ms. Green will get into some of this, Mr. Melissi, perhaps she's had an opportunity to talk to you, but perhaps not. Um, we may have some ARPA money that's available for capital improvements. Um, uh, but, um, last night, for instance, we were talking to the regional agreement committee, and, you know, again, the timing of when they're meeting and when we need the warrants. I, I suspect, because we are drawing the line quite early, um, intentionally so, because, you know, everybody procrastinates, and then it ends up, um, being a real burden on our office, um, that we will get a number of placeholders, and that's fine. As long as people, you know, vet it and then flesh it out and make sure that they get the details to us, you know, in time.
I have to meet with the regional school, um, uh, capital subcommittee to go over their requirements.
Yeah.
And, um, figure out what their requests are for this year as well, so.
So.
That lines up. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, okay, um, twenty-twenty-four annual licensing, um, upscale autos. And this also reminds me, I thought that Ms. McDowell mentioned to me that we might need to sign, um, some of the licenses again.
I don't know anything about it.
Oh, let me see, can you run up on her, grab the file that's on her desk that says, um, licenses?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, but in any event, Ms. Green, did you have anything, um, any color commentary on this?
Um, yes, so our office wi- with licensing, um, Ms. McDowell has done a great job with putting together a form letter, uh, that is sent to all the businesses that require licenses. Um, basically, it's dated October thirty-first, uh, the letter is sent out, um, she also emails if we have an email address. And then that, that, that provides businesses with the information on going online to renew, you know, but fill out their applications and pay their fees. She sends, uh, reminder letters out to businesses that have not, um, gone online or contacted our office as far as, um, renewing their licenses and paying the fees. So the one, um, upscale auto, as we see, uh, was a business that did not reach out to us, that did not, um, go online and renew their, um, license. So basically, on December twenty-eighth, I think, they walked in with their application and paid the fee.
Okay.
So they're in front of you right now. Um, and, and I am going to ask, uh, for not-so-future agenda possibly to put on a discussion, um, to assess some late fees.
I think that's a wonderful idea, um, yeah.
So, just so businesses know that our office cannot be scrambling at the last minute, um, when, you know, these people have been notified in more than what, you know, by two letters, by emails.
Can we also set the deadline a little bit earlier so that we don't have a run on the bank the last week of, of the year?
Yes, yes.
That was particularly hellacious for Ms. McDowell. She, she.
Yeah, exactly, yes, so.
Hung in there, but it was pretty hellacious. Um, on, on the upscale autos, historically, we have had issues with them, um, selling more vehicles than they are authorized to sell. Do we have verification from Mr. Glass that that is not the case now?
Uh, I, I don't know if, if, um, Ms. McDowell had gotten that. Um, we can, he should still be here.
On several occasions, they've been in violation in the past.
How many vehicles they're storing at one time? And if they, they could sell twenty cars in a day and we don't care. It's more that they have an X amount of cars on their lot, right?
Yeah, and Mr. Glass is supposed to inspect and tell us whether people are over, you know, over there.
I was going to say, that isn't Lynn's responsibility.
It's not Lynn's, no.
Right.
Um, it's Mr. Glass. Um, so is there some way for, uh, us to check with him, um, on that while we meet? Um, I don't know about you guys, but personally, I don't want to vote on reinstating this license unless I have verification on that.
I just reading the, the text, the bottom line, it's on the premises as follows, front parking lot, behind the fence, twenty vehicles, so they can't have any, I can picture the front parking lot is not behind the fence, is it?
Um.
I think that means, I think, so upscale auto has their little, their little shed, and then there's a fence right behind it that they back all the vehicles up.
Yes. Yeah.
So I think maybe that's what, that should be how that reads.
The, the, so this makes sense to everybody, based on knowing the layout of the land? It says, front parking lot, behind the fence, twenty vehicles for sale on property. So this assumes that all twenty vehicles are in the front parking lot behind the fence, and I can't picture how that is set up.
I don't think there is a fence in the par, front parking lot.
We don't need to set it up. We just know, we don't really need to envision it.
I think the. No, I think that the, I, all that I care is, does he have more than twenty vehicles on that lot?
One sixty-nine rankings, right. All we care about is how many vehicles are there, twenty or less?
Yeah, I don't know why we're describing where they are.
You can't divorce it unless you approve it. So right now, we can put it wherever we want to.
So there is, there is a fence there, yeah.
Until we say yes, we approve this, doesn't matter.
There is, oh, who's saying that?
She said there's a fence.
There is a fence.
Just confirm there is a fence there.
Okay, so this makes sense.
We must have some reason for putting front parking lot behind the fence. I.
We don't want them lying.
The reason why animal control inspector, there is an auto garage shop also on site, and this is separate from the auto.
Uh, and we have had issues with one lea, one person leasing saying, that's them, that's not me. You, you're saying, I don't, I have too many vehicles, it's them, so that's probably why we're kind of carving that up. Is that, is that responding to what you're saying? Okay, uh, nevertheless, though, are we going to ask Mr. Glass about that?
I'm, I'm sending, um, sending Emily to see if he's still there right now.
All right, well, fear not, we still have other topics to discuss. Um, appoint Eric Kincherf as town accountant, Ms. Green?
So, um, yes, on that, uh, note, so back in November, we, um, entered into a new contract with, um, Mr. Kincherf to provide accounting services. Um, prior to that, we had, we had labeled him as our interim town accountant, and we never actually quite took that away.
Okay.
So this basically is a formality just to appoint, um, Mr. Kincherf as our town accountant and not our interim town accountant.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to appoint Eric Kincherf as a town accountant with a term beginning.
Uh, the term beginning December first of twenty-twenty-three.
And ending.
And will end November thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, great. Appoint Carrie Glass as Hanson local building inspector, Ms. Green?
Okay, um, so this was brought to my attention, uh, by our town clerk. And apparently, when the, uh, board went through its, its appointments from twenty, in May of twenty-twenty-three, um, Mr. Glass was listed as, and I, I'm not really sure how this happened, as an, as an alternate, um, building inspector.
Well, that was what he was before, um, Mr. Curran left, so it must.
No, but this was, this was in this.
I understand, but I think it was probably just some carryover from prior.
Oh, it probably was some carryover.
Yep.
Um, but also too, Mr. Joe Stack, who is the building commissioner from Hanover.
Yep.
Is our alternate, um, local inspector. Um, but I guess with some carryover, it listed all, him also as the, um, alternate inspector, so we had two. Um, so the town clerk brought that to my attention, because she has to file with the state, um, the building inspector, and who the building inspector is and who the alternate building inspector is. Um, so what we're doing here tonight is we're just kind of correcting that we don't have two, like, assistant local building inspectors. Uh, so, um, Carrie Glass is our Hanson local building inspector, um, that we just need to reappoint him with that title.
And Joe Stack from Hanover.
Is our alternate.
Until such time as Mr. Glass gets his proper certifications, is acting as the building commissioner for the town of Hanson.
Commissioner, correct. And basically, his only purpose is to sign occupancy permits, of which, um, Mr. Glass is licensed by the Division of Occupational Licensing, um, Board of Building Regulations and Standards. So he is a licensed building inspector, uh, and the license is, is valid through December thirty-one of twenty-twenty-four, so he holds a va, uh, an updated license for a local building inspector. He can perform all of the inspections with all of the new growth that we have. He can perform all of those inspections, and he provides Mr. Stack with a verbal, uh, that yes, these, these units, uh, comply with all the laws. Um, I am going to request that the occupancy certificate be signed, and ba- basically, that's Mr. Stack. Uh, that, that is what his purpose is, is to just sign the occupancy permit.
Okay, and just for clarification, um, we are certain that Mr. Glass is, um, has the proper certifications, um, under the, um, under the regulations to perform that job and to be employed in that position.
As a Hanson local building inspector, yes, he does, and, and he showed me his, his license today on that.
Okay.
Um, he is still in the process of, um, studying for the exams. He has taken some of the exams, unfortunately not been successful, so he's studying to retake those exams. Uh, but there is no charge to us for Mr. Stack's services of signing those occupancy permits.
Okay.
Um, so, um, there, there's no charge to the town for that service.
Okay, at some point, I would like to talk about, um, Mr. Glass's, um, um, I guess, progress, um, towards getting the appropriate certifications, but we're not posted to discuss that this evening, so.
Exactly, so.
Um, so, but I, I, I would very much like to, and I'm sure the board, um, shares this, um, desire, um, would like to very much have a plan in place in terms of timelines, um, when that might be accomplished. Um, did anybody have any other questions for Ms. Green? Okay, I will entertain a motion to appoint Carrie Glass as the Hanson local building inspector. Again, Ms. Green, what is the charm for that?
Um, so it would, it's an annual, it's an annual appointment, so.
So was that a July first of?
It would be retroactive from July first.
Retroactive July first.
Up till June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, great. And that brings us to one-day liquor licenses. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I just unwittingly skipped over. Discuss town administrator review, Ms. Green?
Um, so, uh, I'm not really sure why this is on the agenda again.
I think probably it was timeline, like when are they due? Um, when are you going to submit yours? When are we supposed to submit ours? And all of that good stuff.
Um, so I think with the la, with the last me, during the last meeting, we talked about, um, possibly submitting these by the end of January from the board. Um, I can submit mine to Ms. McDowell the first week of February, um, and then possibly that possibility. So we have a meeting on, let's see, February?
It's the twenty-third. Oh, February, sorry, I don't know.
Yeah, so February, let's see. Um, so February, maybe either February, February twentieth. Um, I would recommend that date to go over, um, possibly, uh, let me just recapture my thoughts, to, um, schedule an executive session.
Okay, so, so here's, here's the process, just for those who haven't been involved in it before. Um, we have to make sure that we are avoiding, um, any violation of open meeting law. So I cannot see, for instance, what Mr. Weeks has rated Ms. Green, or his commentary, or Mr. Hill, Mrs. Rain, Mr. George, nor can they see mine. That would be cross-pollination, that would be a violation of open meeting law, uh, where we would be discussing, but not discussing in an open session, so. So the way that we handle this is we provide each of our um respective reviews to Ms. McDowell, who is the only person who has the benefit until we uh get into, you know, into our meeting, of seeing what everybody has submitted. Um, Ms. Green will have the ability to sit down with each of us individually before we are in an open session where we will be discussing her performance. And I would certainly hope that we would not be discussing something, either a deficiency or um an accomplishment of Ms. Green's um in open session, that we have not given her the benefit of discussing privately with her, um, and giving her uh the benefit of responding to. Um, so we provide all of those um reviews to Ms. McDowell. She compiles sort of a spreadsheet. Names are left off in terms of who has contributed what, although because of styles and verbiage and what have you, you can kind of easily, I think, extrapolate who said what about about Ms. Green. Um, and then um we discuss uh the feedback, and we um, you know, have a conversation with Ms. Green in public about um her performance, and then we take it from there. And if there are things that we think she needs to work on, um, then uh we articulate those, and we come up with a, an action plan and a development plan. Uh, so, um, do people, given the, given everything I just said, and the fact you've got, uh, we've been given the review before, the, what we've got in here is self-assessment, which is for Ms. Green. Um, do we feel as though um people could um complete Ms. Green's review by the end of January? Is that uh achievable for everybody? Okay, all right, um, okay, great, um, any further discussion on that, Ms. Green?
Did anybody else attend the seminar today on performance appraisal systems and goal setting in the public sector?
I did.
Did you? I was there too, yeah.
Hopefully.
They're gonna send us all the material.
I was gonna say, well, if they send the the um recording, can you forward that to me? Because usually they'll record and then, okay.
Yeah, they did, they filmed it.
Yeah, thanks.
It's gonna be posted on the MMA website.
I have done a few performance reviews in my day, but.
I know you have. I haven't, except for once.
Yeah, I've.
And it was traumatic, I have to say, because you have to get over yourself and and do it.
You know, I think, you know, it's, people do say that it's traumatic, but the way I look at it is like, I think if you really care about somebody's development and you want them to improve, the only way they're going to do that is if you talk to them about it.
No, this is true.
You know, it's like being in a relationship with somebody. If you don't tell somebody that there's things that they need to improve on and whatever, um, and vice versa, that they say, hey, you know, I'd like you to work on that. And so that's why we're meeting with Lisa, because there may be things that she's like, hey.
Completely understand.
I'd really love it if you would just only call me one time a day and not fifteen times a day, you know?
But the problem is, when you come from the world that you were the one that was always evaluated.
Yeah.
That's a little tough.
It's hard, it is hard.
To go over that fence to the other side of it.
It is hard, it is hard, it is hard, but I, if you look through the lens of like, I'm helping this person, I'm not like condemning them, I'm I'm helping them uh grow. Um, I think it's helpful, um, at least I find it is. Um, okay, um, so again, what date are you proposing? February that we're all gonna talk about this?
Um, February twentieth.
Okay, all right, so you'll get your self appraisal to us when?
Um, I have it just about done as well. I'll have it to you by the end of, I'll have it to Lynn by the end of next week.
It might be helpful for you to get us your self appraisal uh before we sit down and do your review, so that we have an idea of what you're viewing as your accomplishments, which a lot of us probably either take for granted or have forgotten over the period of time that, you know, that we've been dealing with you, so. All right, awesome, we've beaten that horse to death, um, and then that does bring us to one-day liquor licenses. Um, so I will entertain a motion to approve the one-day liquor licenses um of one-five-twenty-four from Michael Minichucci.
Minicucci.
Minicucci, all right, how do you guys know how to pronounce that?
Because my kids went to school, they live up the end of my street.
My kids go to school.
I apologize, Mr. Minicucci. Um, and the one-fourteen twenty-four, William Smith, uh, one-twenty-twenty-four, Matt MacArthur, one-twenty-eight-twenty-four, Kaylee Standish, and two, well, I really wish we wouldn't approve this, because then I wouldn't have to do it, the two-four-twenty-four, Allison Diller-Pola Plunge After Party. Um, I will entertain that motion.
Summum, after he says what he has to say. There's no check upon the first one for the football banquet?
It's already happened.
There's no check, sorry.
It already happened, it's one-five.
What is it?
One-five, it happened last.
Last week.
Okay, but we, I mean, we usually have, I don't know that it matters, but we usually have a check.
It doesn't, honestly.
I have no idea why we do.
We don't need to see the check. Ms. Green needs to make sure, and Camp, the Camp Kamani Commission does, I am going to.
I didn't know, I didn't know if it was a a reason.
Yeah.
I can check on that, uh, at the camp, but I don't do finances, uh, I don't do checks.
Sorry about that.
No, no, no need to apologize, but that said, you did derail me from my, I will entertain a motion to approve the liquor licenses.
Summum.
And I will second it.
Okay, um, any further discussion?
We're gonna have a awesome football punch today in the mail.
Are you guys intentionally trying to derail me from this, like?
Part of the discussion.
I'm trying, I'm like ADD, trying to focus in on this.
I'm just trying to sell.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, all right, um, and while speaking of the polar plunge, I too will be doing, wait, wait, what costume are you wearing?
Can't tell anybody.
Okay.
Are you, you two are actually doing it?
We, we've done it every year, pretty much.
I have a new theme every year, this year is.
And Mr. Stewart has done it with me.
You do it too?
Yes.
Ever since the first one.
Yes, he's my, um, he's my, my therapy, my therapy companion. I grab onto Joe and Alex and, and go in.
I may be a a watcher. I'd love to watch you guys go in.
That sounded kind of creepy, but. We're sure you made it in the best way possible. Okay, um, all right, um, open session minutes. Um, we have several in our packet. Um, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from December fifth, December twelfth, and December nineteenth.
Summum.
And second.
Um, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Great, uh, that brings us to economic development, I mean, I'm sorry, to committee updates. Um, Economic Development Committee, not a lot to update. We're gonna be doing a PSA um for the Economic Development Committee with Whitman Hanson Cable. We're scheduled to do it next week, uh, basically just saying, hey, here's what we're all about. Um, here's what you could come to us and talk about, and um here's what we're working on. High Street Park Committee, what say you?
Um, there's nothing necessarily of substance, other than we had a couple of um meetings with some uh developers and just some people that develop parks and things like that to help us give us a vision.
Thank you for clarifying park development.
Yeah, I just, they um, they're just, they, they don't, they are more like landscape designers, I guess, and they're helping us create somewhat of a vision and give us some options of what we can do. It's actually pretty informative and gave us a lot of insight, so, other than that, um, meetings have been great, uh, but nothing, no shovel the dirt yet, so, nothing of substance.
Um, I do love that little house, I I love the work that Conservation's done and that you guys have done. I love that property, taking a little walk. It's a nice change of pace if people haven't been up there to walk those trails. Um, Highway Committee, we gotta get something popping on this, Mrs. Rain and and Ms. Green, what's going on?
So, um, actually, our town planner received a copy of the report from Weston and Smith.
Sampson?
Sampson, yes. So he did, and he actually forwarded it to me. Um, I have not had a chance to open it up and look at it, but from what I understand, they did not find any um re- any significant reasons why the hot new, like, a new highway department could not be located where they currently are.
Okay, all right.
So that, that's the general understanding I ha- I have without um reading it.
So if we needed to start to move this ancient issue forward, um, when could we possibly get the Highway Committee together?
Um, we can get them together at any point, at this point, just, you know, to review that, and then to look at the next step, which would be um hi- hiring an architect, designing architecture who works with um public works buildings.
Okay, and again, at the risk of being boring, I'm wondering, is this something we could potentially look to our upper money for?
Um, I'll, I'll talk about that.
Okay.
With with my town's report and give information on that.
Um, it isn't the solution to everything, but it is the solution to many things. Um, McQuon Property Reuse Committee, we now, I believe, have got a full contingency of people that we've appointed. So I would like to get something on the books. I will have my people call your people, and we can reach out to the various people who applied um to start getting going on that. The way that I kind of think that we should structure this is we've got a, we've got several members who won't necessarily be voting members, but their input will nevertheless be extremely valuable. Um, you know, Mary Collins, um, somebody from the Board of Library Trustees, probably Corinne Cofardo, um, and then uh the folks who had applied um to be on the committee, and then somebody from Parks and Fields, uh, because these are sort of all the constitu- constituencies, obviously, Jamison Shabney, or some, his designated needs to be part of that mix. Um, somebody from Conservation, and we need to just sort of talk about Tony's, I'll call it, I don't know, starter kit uh discussion, you know, of what he's kind of had for thoughts. Um, then we, at least have that presented. I'd like to have the Library Board of Trustees present um what they have had done for what their needs assessment was. I'd like the senior center to have their needs assessment presented, and um, and then I think once we're all equally on the same sheet of music with all of that information and everybody understands the the work that's been done, preliminary work that's been done, then I think we can actually, um, then I think we can actually, um, you know, effectuate some change. I'm being told that I have only four minutes to go. Okay, um, Recreation Committee, um, we already discussed that, I think we don't have anything else on that. Transfer Station Task Force, are we doing anything about that?
We're doing anything.
What's the story? Oh, yes, mysterious, huh?
There you go.
Oh, you're the new chair? Oh, you didn't tell us that, congratulations, or condolences, whatever, whatever may be the case there. Um, Regional Agreement Committee, uh, Ms. Green and I attended the Regional Agreement Committee last evening. Was it last night? Yeah.
Yes.
Um, and um, there was a lot to unpack there. We had the people from Mars um who were attending answering some questions. Um, the last time I spoke to you guys, um, the issue of transportation costs was brought up. That continues to be the elephant in the room, that continues to be what Whitman is pushing for. Um, we have asked for some numbers to be run, to have a better understanding of what we're looking at. Um, all of the various formulas that you use, whether it's statutory or even transportation, uh, there was a foundation enrollment uh formula that might be used. Um, and there's a lot of other formulas, but anyway, that was one of the formulas that was discussed. Um, these all have the ability to bite us or to help us. Uh, it depends on what the swings in the populations and various other things. So we've asked if Mr. Stanbrook, their current business manager, can run some numbers and present those to us. And our next meeting is February twelfth. Um, so no decisions were made, um, just some information provided, and I'll circle back with you guys um and um and update you as um as we get more information. Any other committee updates? Okay, fantastic, Town Administrator Report, I think, Ms. Green, you have like two minutes, basically. But don't feel rushed.
Okay, um, basically, I just, I just really want to congratulate our um Lynn McDowell and Emily Sprague for um working with the online, with Permatize, our online system, for the first time this this licensing um time. Um, big step forward for the town to gravitate towards electronic. Um, uh, this, as as with any new system, there there were wrinkles. Um, we will work to improve it and get more businesses acclimate to the process for next licensing, but um compared to what I've seen the last, over the last few years, this by far was um a huge jump.
Absolutely.
In 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 streamlining and making easier our our permitting process. Um, Electronic Time and Attendance Program that we've been talking about, uh, we hope to go live January twenty-nine. Uh, Emily, Lynn, and myself attended a um a meeting with Harpers and Boris. They are preparing training videos right now that will be available on YouTube for all of our, the staff that that are gonna be on the first um trial on this. Um, and so we're watching out for those, and hopefully have an update on when those links will be available. Um, Hanson will be receiving one hundred eighty thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars from the Chapter Ninety program under the fair share apportionment, so there's two different um apportionments uh for roadway repairs and maintenance. The formula Mass DOT uses for the fair share apportionment is based on local road mileage, population, and employment, whereas the Chapter Ninety formula is based strictly on road mileage for the town of Hanson, which is currently about sixty-one miles um that they use for a formula. Um, the future calculations, starting, I believe, next fiscal year, will include uh the roadways that the town has just accepted as public, which would include Alden Way, Grain Lane, Stringer Lane, Litchfield, Litchfield Road, and Proudford Way. Um, we lost our power during the December eighteen storm here at um this area of Hanson. Town Hall has a generator. Um, a very good um concern was brought to my attention by our town clerk regarding the traffic signals right out in front of Town Hall here. Um, and there was a question, why can't we have those traffic signals um added to our generator so that we lose power this intersection out in front of the Town Hall, does the traffic light still operate? A fantastic um idea by our town clerk, we are looking into it. It's not as difficult as people think, so um Charlie Baker is working with a company to about find, getting those hooked up to a generator, and we have Jamison working um with the company that works these lights here to make that all happen, so.
But when we size that generator, it was sized for this building, is that gonna draw too much additional electricity in?
Apparently, it can handle the, the, um, apparently, it can handle these lights without any problem at all.
I don't think they take a lot of power.
I don't, I really don't.
Yeah, they don't, apparently, it can handle it without any problem.
I had to say one thing about that whole situation out there, I was very impressed with people honoring those stop signs.
I like the roadway stop.
I actually think they did better than they do with the lights.
Yes, yes, it was very good.
Yeah.
I like it better without the lights.
I, 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 I agree, and um at the intersection of twenty-seven and fifty-eight, um, a highway was like right out there getting all, you know, with with everybody, you know, fire and police.
They did a good job of controlling it all.
Yeah, it was, I actually was like, you know, I kind of like the, I like, kind of like fifty-eight and twenty-seven better with the stop signs than I do with the lights. Um, but nevertheless, I'm not wishing that we have a power outage, so.
There's no benefit in discussing the light near the fire station?
It's too far.
No, as far as, okay.
Right, yeah, it, that's not in close proximity to our generator, so.
It's in close proximity to.
This one's more by the west.
Yeah.
Nobody stops.
No.
Nobody stops.
It's horrible, okay.
So I've, I've been working, it's, it's time here for, for our, all our audits. Um, I've been working with a number of our auditing firms um to supply them with information that they need. Our insurance carriers, workers' comp liability, um, for some of the areas that I'm working on, submitting information to our auditors. Um, and so thi- this is great news. I had a quick little meeting yesterday with the Plymouth Plymouth County Commissioners and and Treasurer Tom O'Brien and Matt Hanley. Um, I, I was under the impression that we had used up all of our ARPA money um with the McQuon money, the amount we used at the McQuon and the other projects that we have um earned, so I thought we had used it all. But I was informed yesterday that the town of Hanson still has one million, five hundred forty-two thousand, two hundred thirty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents still available. However, however.
That's the good, that's the good news, but this is not the use it however you want money.
Oh, okay, yeah. My net, right, this is not the use it however we want. This is the Plymouth County portion, which has um specific categories that we can use this money towards. Um, now, one of the, one of the projects um that was, that was actually mentioned to me immediately was the ambulance that the fire um had proposed and put in article to the October special town meeting. Um, from what I understand, a lot of towns are putting in to purchase ambulances out of this money, because that is an eligible expense. So I did approach um our fire chief, got the cost of the ambulance, so instead of using ambulance funds, we can use the ARPA money towards the ambulance, and I think it's, that's well spent. Um, it allows us to get the equipment that we need on the ambulance, um, and it's an eligible expense. And the Plymouth County, we um can submit a purchase order. We don't have to pay for it and then submit to be reimbursed, we can submit, they're accepting purchase orders. Um, one other project we looked at potentially, because again, there's certain categories, water and infrastru- water and sewer infrastructure, negative economic impact, um, health, which is where the ambulance falls under, and then the lost revenue, which we use for the McQuon. So underwater and sewer infrastructure, there is a category under COVID repairs and removal and rebuilding, um, which. and rebuilding, um, which we do have the Pratt Place culvert, um, to consider, um, which could be a one-point-two-million-dollar project. So these funds here would be eligible for that, so. Um, but I'm gonna have another meeting with them tomorrow. Um, I'm going to have, um, Tony DeFrayis sit in on this and get more information on it, but that's wonderful news for the town.
Did Tony apply for a grant for the Pratt Place culvert?
We have, we've been turned down. We've been turned down every time, and he has been told that that Pratt Place does not qualify in, for a number of reasons, although he's tried.
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right.
Uh, also, our municipal aggregate program received conditional approval from the Department of Public Utilities. Uh, the town has thirty days to file a compliance filing with the DPU, which, for, uh, for final approval. And I guess which means that we need to change some, some language in, um, our, um, paperwork that we filed. Um, so again, I'm having, we're gonna have a meeting with Patrick Roach of Good Energy on January sixteenth to kind of narrow down what those changes need to be, to file that within thirty days. National fireworks, uh, site meetings that the EPA talked about. So January eleven at seven PM is the, at the Hanover High School. It's, it's, um, information session number one. Hanson is invited, anybody from Hanson is well-invited. Um, session number two will be held in Hanson on January eighteenth at the middle school at seven PM. Um, the EPA has sent postcards out to residents, um, with this information on it. So, um, most people should have gotten a postcard about this.
I have not gotten one. Um, have you guys gotten?
No, I got.
Yeah, I did.
You did?
I don't think they sent the dance on, but what's over there?
It's on Facebook.
We put it on Facebook, uh, David, so I, I don't know, maybe they're still working on sending them out, but we're, we're posting it on Facebook and we're gonna get it out there.
Well, that's the noble.
And then January eighteenth is ours at the Whitman Middle School at seven PM. And last but not, uh, last but not least, I just want to, um, negotiations for all our union contracts are going to commence, um, within the next month and a half. All of our union contracts expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, so we will work very hard to come to agreements to have all our new contracts in place. And to give you an update on the local meals, uh, tax distribution, which town, Hanson approved on October, at the October twenty-twenty-two meeting. Um, last ye- uh, first year go-around, we received eighty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine, uh, for the first go-around. So far, September of this year distribution, December of this year distribution, the town has received seventy-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars. Uh, so with, with two months still to go, um, in the fiscal year. And that concludes my town history report.
Um, just one question, do we, um, any insight into the forensic school audit?
Um, yes, so, um, they are, they're, they are waiting on some particular numbers from DESI. Um, I did get an email from Mark Abrams about this. And let me just, uh, pull up what it is they're waiting on. Um, but as soon as he gets these, these numbers from DESI, then he can move forward, um, on the audit.
That's all right, as long as I just know he's waiting on some numbers.
Yeah, he's waiting on some numbers from DESI. And then we were gonna have him reach out to Jeff, Superintendent Jeff Simonak gives the contact, um, for the, uh, moving forward on the rest of the audit.
Okay, awesome, thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Green? Okay, uh, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn, and then we're gonna go into executive session, which I'll get to in a minute. I will entertain a motion to adjourn our open meeting, to go into executive session pursuant to open meeting law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, treasurer, collector, building litigation discussion. Two, executive session pursuant to open meeting law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one, A six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real estate if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body conservation property. Three, executive session pursuant to open meeting law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one, A seven, to review and approve executive session minutes, December fifth, twenty twenty-three, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. I will entertain a motion to adjourn and enter executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, I should mention, we will not be returning to open session. Uh, roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you very much.